We'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. This is not working. Ryan.
Can you hear me now?
I say we're green.
The audience is here though.
So I'll check one more time. Is that coming through?
I don't think so.
Not in here.
They can't hear it there, but it's on the speakers on the internal here.
Okay.
Gallery though.
So as staff is working on the sound, I'll try to speak a little bit louder. I know on the broadcast that it is picking up. So we'll proceed as best we can. So and if anybody does have in the audience have difficulty hearing, you know, please raise your hand and we'll try to adjust our volume. So the, we do have an agenda. Were provided. Okay.
There you are.
Yes, there we are. So with that, I'll call on Stephen Anderson to conduct this public hearing. Stephen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you is a resolution for snow and mowing removal. These properties were assessed and invoiced last winter and this spring for removal of snow and mowing that had occurred. These properties were given first and second notices and with the notices, they were still unpaid. So as part of city ordinance and state statute, we are allowed to assess these onto their property taxes. As part of this, the property owners were sent certified letters and they are given the opportunity to come before the council here this evening and plead their case if they would like. I have not received any verbal or written notices from anyone. One note is that the 315 South First Street did come in and pay today. So this resolution will have to be amended before we send it to the county for certification.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak as part of this public hearing?
Leroy Affalter, 302 Gene Avenue. I've asked this question for a long time because I'm going to ask our attorney, what is the wording that applies to how the people are notified?
I believe our statute or our local ordinance, there's a mailed notice that goes out and that has to be sent out prior to lawn mowing. I know the mowing and the weed requires that. I'm off the top of my head.
What initiates that letter?
Generally, it's either a complaint from the public or a notice from staff that sees weeds are too long or the sidewalks are unshovelled, you know, or there's ice.
I know your battle is for the, for the state of Minnesota, but anybody that gets a complaint, I think the fur comes up in the back of their neck when they hear that. And I would like to see it calm down a little bit, that they're just notified that they're against the rules of the sidewalk and the weeds of Marshall and that they are likely, they're liable for some penalties. Whenever you see a complaint, would you like me to complain everything? I don't like your hair.
I think there's a difference between hair and weeds and lawn.
But.
We do have the obligation to provide notice.
But.
It's not a verbal notice.
Is it in the ordinance that the word complaint, is that a state issue that has to be used? That's my question. I've asked it for years.
It's just notification that a violation of our ordinance is occurring.
But you like using the word complaint? Does that make you happy? Or would you like to say, hey, would you like to have somebody say, hey, somebody said your weeds are long and you're violating the ordinance of Marshall? That's a little bit calmer.
I believe, Doc, a couple of years ago, I received one of these on my rental properties for snow removal and the word complaint was not in the letter. I believe the letter I received and was on a rental house I didn't check very often, should check them more often, but that were in violation of the snow and ice ordinance of Marshall. And at that time with snow and ice, it had to be done within a very quick period because of the liability or the slipping. But I do not believe the word complaint was in that letter.
And Jim is correct on that. I think the, you know, maybe the clarification or if there's confusion, it's, it's, you know, what would prompt the notice to go out? And the prompting of the notice that would go out is, is that someone has identified that there's a problem, either with the weeds.
Complaint was my word, the word I used, complaint. Yes.
Right.
Well, if I was a teacher, which I was, I don't like to have people complain or complain about what I was doing with them in the office. It's a very harsh word and I think our public reserves a little bit better attention than that on it. The other thing I'd like to have them know is what the format is. When they get the letter, what procedures do you go through after that as far as notifying them? And if you don't get notified, then what's the penalties? And who do you have to get to shovel or to do the weed work? That has never been really brought to surface that I know of. And people have come up with what's the maximum and anybody has, well, you're going to assign it, but what's the maximum fine that anyone has had for either snow or weed removal in this town?
Yeah, I think Dennis or.
What's the historical?
Yeah, Dennis or Jason, you can respond to that. But really, the, the fee that's assessed is the cost that we would have for having a private contractor go mow or do the shoveling.
I believe it's not a fine. Cost plus an administration fee. There's not a fine.
And what's, what's the administrative, just to get it on there, what's the administration?
I believe when I got mine, the cost was $35 to remove the snow and $50 administration fee. And I can go back through it. It was six, seven years ago that I received mine. So I believe that's what the cost was when that happened to me. The administration fee, you know, which it does take time. And so I believe it was a $35 and there was a local guy who removed it. And then it was a $50 administration fee because I remember talking to Jane DeFries. I had those same questions and Jane and I went around, but it does take time and effort. If a, a staff member spends 40 minutes sending that out, that is a justice, you know, it costs $50 an hour to keep those people on, on staff.
And the ordinance does require seven days notice on the grass side of things, on the snow and ice. There is no notice that goes out by letter. The ordinance declares it to be a nuisance after a period of time and then at which point we can have it removed. Usually we're extremely generous and we're probably two or three times what the ordinance says for length of time after a snow event before we actually take care of something like that. But that's, that's how the ordinance reads.
And I think, isn't it certified? Don't we have to certify letter or something?
I believe we do.
I think so. So that's again, additional cost.
The ordinance, Doc Affalter, says if any such owner, occupant or agent fails to comply with the height limitation, this is on grass. After, given notice by the city clerk has not within seven days of such notice complied, the city shall cause such weeds and grass to be cut and the expenses that incurred shall be a lien upon such real estate.
And I would guess that's exactly what the letter says that you send out, Dennis.
I think the more.
Engineering office sends.
Sends out, okay.
They get the first go in. Yes.
The more common input.
Well, my other question that we haven't answered yet is the person who gives the announcement that there is, I didn't say complaint, did I? I said announcement, that there's something wrong. What's the anticipated time of, of having something done in their mind? Is it, is it going to be mowed the next day? Is it going to be two weeks before they get the snow?
I believe the ordinance said seven, seven days, correct, Steve?
And that's exactly what Jason just said a few minutes ago.
So if I, if I'm running down, and I'll use me as an example because I've seen it, where I've, I've called Jason on dog poop in the middle of the sidewalk because I run and I ride bike and there's nothing worse than running and slipping in dog poop or riding your bike over it. And so I've called him on that and I have given notice that such and such an address has these problems. When I run, there's been places where I've run in the winter, my wife and I are both running and yeah, the sidewalk should be cleared. If they're not cleared in a week and we have to run into the road, which puts us at a hazard, yeah, I'm going to let Jason know that such and such an address, it's been two weeks since it's snowed and there's, I can't get on the sidewalk, sidewalk's blocked. Okay? They give notice. I tell them that such and such an address has had snow for two weeks. Okay, I've given him notice. How, then he takes it and he'll give it notice to the, to the address that there's been an issue raised about your snow or your mowing or your, or your dog feces in your sidewalk. You know, what are we going to do? So.
Now, does the owner, does it go to the owner or does it go to the address of the violation?
On rentals, it goes to the owner because I received it while the notice, I did not get a notification on the storm removal. It was done and I got the notification because snow has to be moved quicker. I believe lawns, it goes to the owner. It goes to the owner, doesn't go to the house.
It'll always go to the owner. I couldn't say for certain if we also copy it locally if we see an out of state address or something. I'm not sure. I'd have to check with our staff on that, but it certainly goes to the owner.
I think the more common input that I receive, council members receive are those, those properties where there hasn't been a notice sent. The lawn is unkempt next to the property. Why is the city not taking care of that? The sidewalk hasn't been shoveled for a week. Why is the city not taking care of it? Rarely, if ever, do we get a complaint like you're talking about where you're saying, we weren't notified properly. We don't get those types of complaints because that notification does happen, but it's more, why isn't the city more aggressive about enforcing the ordinance about lawns or weeds or snow?
The only thing I'm at, Bob, as I say, on lawns, on snow it is not because snow, snow, and did Jason say, yeah, snow, you're not notified. Usually you get, you get the notification after it's been moved. Just to clarify that. Lawns, yes. No, you do not.
Someone has to initiate the action then. The city, whether it be a street department person or an officer of the law or anything else, they are not required or to actually report any of these violations?
Bob, I'd like to address that if I can. So initially and city administrator Hanson and I have had conversation about this because the way the policy and where the word complaint comes from is that typically our staff doesn't address this unless a citizen complains about a neighboring property or, you know, problem sidewalk and a path that they walk or run. And I'm always concerned about waiting until the problem is so bad that one neighbor's irritated another neighbor and where the idea of a complaint comes to play. We don't want to turn our staff into the lawn cops or the sidewalk cops. That's not their job. But I did, I have expressed my feeling that if it's so bad that as staff drive around in their normal area out of business during the day, they notice something sidewalk that's been unmaintained or grass that's excessively long and weeds, they should also be able to note that to City Hall in lieu of a citizen complaint. And that's been my position. When a citizen calls City Hall about those properties, Doc, that is a complaint. Okay? That's not the city complaining. That's not the staff complaining to other staff. Those staff are making observations. Neighborhood people calling on their neighbor, that's a complaint.
Now, do you interpret any phone call like that? I don't know how the wording is. I don't know. I'm not the person calling. But if that person doesn't use the word complaint and just says, hey, their grass is long or their sidewalk, would you address the situation in the same manner without using the word complaint?
Well, I think, Doc, in answer to that, and we could play this verbal tag back and forth all night and I don't intend to, but I think you and I both know the difference when somebody calls, if they're calling me making an observation or if they're calling me complaining.
I just wanted to bring up the issue because I've talked about this city council meetings for years and I just don't like the word complaint.
So are you observing that or are you complaining that?
I'm just, I'm just notifying you that it's been long enough.
It sounds to me like a complaint, but that's okay.
For different administrations, a lot of different council people.
Let me just say that we have heard you and actually on our website, you can report a concern. And that was at your suggestion. We didn't use the word complaint. So we have made some modifications. But I, I do think the word complaint adequately describes something that's unsatisfactory.
Absolutely.
Unless you want to use protest or grievance. I mean, there's a whole bunch of other words, but it's a complaint. But we did put on our website, report a concern.
Thanks, Doc.
So as we continue this public hearing, is there any other input from the audience as part of the public hearing or from the council as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to, oh, Steve?
Yeah. So just for further education, in the code, under 62 dash two, and council member Lazinski brought it up, snow is a bigger deal because it says here, declare a hazard. All snow and ice remaining on public sidewalks or streets is hereby declared a constituent to public health and safety. And again, I'm going to wear my doctor hat. More people go down on ice and we want this city to be walkable with the sidewalks. We maintain it. You know, that's an argument that we as council have had up here for many times is, do we hold the citizens accountable for the sidewalk in front of them or do we just take the levy and add the levy and we take responsibility as a city to keep those sidewalks clean? That's, that's an argument to go in and keep deciding because that's, that goes to the general levy and it's expensive. But it says here, 24 hours after deposition has ceased, that has to be cleared. That means you have 24 hours to get those sidewalks cleaned. And we are extremely liberal up here on this, as far as that 24 hours. I can guarantee you we are. And like I said, I have brought up, and I'll, I'll use the word, I've complained, Doc, because if my wife or I go down and break something, shame on somebody for doing that. And people really, they sometimes take a little too long, you know? And that's just if they need help doing it, well, then we'll give them the notice that they've had a, somebody call and be concerned about their sidewalk and they can either find somebody to do it for 20 bucks or get the 50 or $85 bill, you know? It's up to them. But that's got to be clean because we need to keep our kids safe, our elderly safe and anybody from walking to walking. I don't want to have to put anybody in a nursing home or put them in the ground because they broke a hip and died on somebody's ice.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda number three is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing, or excuse me?
Consider the resolution now.
Sorry, I was jumping ahead. Thank you for bringing, reeling me back. The, we have the resolution that would adopt the assessment for the weed elimination and the snow removal.
I move approval of the resolution noting that the property affected 315 South First Street be removed in light of payment.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion. If not, we will move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda number three is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the consideration of the adoption of the ordinance of the heating ventilation and air conditioning license ordinance for mechanical and HVAC construction. With us tonight to conduct this public hearing, Ilya Gutman from our building department.
Thank you, Mary Hansel. So state building code requires building permit for practically all work that is mechanical in nature. And that includes home furnaces, for example, and HVAC. State does not have licensing for that kind of work, like state has licensing for plumbing and for building construction, but it does not have a license for HVAC work. It only requires a bond. And that makes it very difficult to deal with some violations and not applying for the building permit. So staff has an idea to implement the local HVAC license. At some point, we had a plumbing license, but then we abandoned it because the state does have a plumbing license requirement. But in this case, with a local HVAC license, there will be some opportunity to deal with people who don't apply for the building permit. It will also help local contractors in some case, in some cases that it will allow them to be on the equal footing from someone else coming from far away and doing something without permit, for example. We went through the LNO and we went through ways and means for fee, which is just $50 to cover the cost of that thing. And last council meeting, it was introduced and a public hearing was called.
Okay. Thank you, Ilya. As part of the public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or from the council that wishes to speak as part of this public hearing? First from the audience, then from the council?
I'll visit on this. I know, to clarify, you don't have to be a local plumber to get this permit.
Correct.
And I know because it'll give us advantage of local plumbers or HVAC people. Somebody from the cities can apply for this permit, receive it and work on one project in late.
Absolutely.
So just to clarify that this is not the limit other people from coming in. And the second thing is on LNO, one of our pushes was to keep the fee low. I believe the $50, $25 a year, $25 a year is not out of the question. And this was created because people were doing work without permits. This is one of those ordinances that's created because people are not following the rules. If people followed the rules, we would not have this ordinance. So, and I think we kept the fee low. I think it's reasonable and I think it's acceptable. And it's just frustrating. We got to make ordinances because people do not follow the rules.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Yeah. Just as, just to add on to that, like Ilya said, this is to make sure that we do get a permit to do the work and it's not just to get the permit, it's to make sure that the work is done in a safe manner, especially like a furnace installation or work on that, that the work is done and it's done properly. So there's no exhaust coming back into the house or whatever. There are possibilities. It allows our inspector to go out and check the work that's being done.
Correct. I guess if there is no permit, it means that there are no inspections.
Yeah, there's no permit. There's no way of knowing that's done and, and there's no inspection. So.
And speaking of people out of town, the application will be online. So it will be easier to apply.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. I'll now consider a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion. Not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the, thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include consider the authorization to declare vehicles surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, the National Highway Safety Grant, the repurposed surplus of DWI forfeiture vehicle to be used at the Merritt Center, consider the approval of a temporary on sale liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce at, for use at the Red Baron Arena, consider the approval of the gambling application exempt permit for United Way of Southwest Minnesota at Brawl Brothers on January 27, 2023, from the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. There's a payment to Bolton and Mink Incorporated, the airport snow removal equipment, SRE building, consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the MinDOT agreement for funding of the site and building design, the Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project, the Parkway Phase Two Parkway Basin, consider the approval of the BNSF Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railroad Agreement, calling for a public hearing on the on sale and Sunday liquor license application for Atlantic Place, and calling for a public hearing on the on sale liquor license application for the Gambler. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda, any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion.
Item 11.
11 has been asked to be removed. Any other item? If not, Steve, your motion was?
Fine. Yeah. Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve all of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of number. agenda with the exception of number, agenda item number eleven. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay. Agenda number eleven, the Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project, Phase Two Parkway Basin. John?
Just a question engineering on that. There seems like there were several costs involved with Burlington Northern. And did we anticipate that in the budgeting? Are we covering that by contingent funds? Or just where are we at on those funds?
Permitting with BNSF is definitely not cheap. Costs you a lot of time and money. I mean, this project was supposed to be bid this year. We're here in fall, finally getting an agreement in place. So we were prepared for this. I think the last time we worked with them, I don't remember the project, but permitting costs and spotting costs and everything ended up costing probably close to twenty thousand dollars. And this one will be fairly similar. It'll probably be in the fifteen range by the time we're done paying for their services. It's just part of the cost of doing business with them. It's a necessary part of this project. I also recognize that the signatory on there is Jesse Dean is no longer with us. We've already asked them to change that, and we're making a slight change to the exhibit, but we just haven't gotten that back from them yet. But the, the basis of the agreement's the same, and we're asking for council approval of the, of what's here, understanding that those two minor changes are coming.
Yeah.
But we should be prepared for that cost. I don't have a number for you right now of what we have budgeted versus our estimate. We'll come forward again with an authorization to advertise for bids at some point in the coming month or so, and I can try to come with numbers at that time.
Yeah, but it's just more that you already anticipated the costs there from other projects.
Correct.
So that was, that just seemed like it was a fairly large number all of a sudden. That wasn't sure if we had expected that or not, so.
No, that's to be expected.
Yeah. I think the last time we went through this was a flood control project with a railroad on the west side of it out there. Yeah, the flagging costs at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour or whatever they are, I mean, it's, it's basically the same agreement, only just changed the description of the project. There's very little negotiation to get language changed within that agreement.
Okay.
And I think we're fortunate to be able to tag along with their insurance policy because the cost to the city to obtain a ten million, five million dollar policy would be--
Very significant.
Significantly higher than the twelve hundred dollars.
And we did check into that with our finance staff and our insurance providers, and definitely a better deal to go with BN.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, I'm surprised that the per day cost for flagging is that low. That, that's actually, I would expect it to be higher than that from other projects.
Now, let's say, as long as that was anticipated, I would move authorize the execution, assuming there's some minor changes that will be coming in the future here and further approvals, so.
Okay. Motion by John.
Second.
Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion pa-- motion passes. Agenda number fifteen is the, consider the approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Lake of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Property Casualty and Liability Insurance. So with us tonight, Carla Drown from our finance department. Carla?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Tonight, we have before you our renewal for the property and casualty insurance that runs from October first through September thirtieth of every year. And this also includes MMU and the library. So tonight, we have with us Joel from our Bremer Insurance to provide us some additional information.
Good evening, council members. It's good to see you all, and I hope you're well. Appreciate you allowing me to present and go over your insurance renewal tonight, and wanted sincerely thank you for years of partnership and the years of business that, that Bremer was allotted to be able to serve you. So sincere thanks on, on behalf of myself and our staff and our whole team. And so tonight, as we did in previous years, I always like to give a state of the state, if you will, and insurance, and what factors are you and, and really all organizations dealing with? And how do you specifically compare to what, say, the average US business organization is facing? And how does your league policy compare to those of what everybody's seeing? You know, there's a lot of factors that we're all dealing with, and high cost is one of those. When you look at inflation itself being eight-plus percent, and over the COVID years of caustic instruction, through the roof, I mean, unprecedented, and litigation continues to be increasing, people getting sued more for different reasons, all those unfortunately translate to insurance, higher payouts, higher cost. So at a baseline, you would expect that insurance is going to keep pace and track with some of those. And in fact, it does. And that's no surprise. So when you're looking from, from a macro or an analysis basis, the average US business and organization through the second quarter, and this was pure rates, so not any coverage changes, not any exposure changes, just pure rate is ten percent. And so that's what a normal business in, in the, in the standard insurance market would expect. And the league's different, and you're in a bucket of your own. You're dedicated to insure for Minnesota cities. And you can see in, in the premium totals there, your premium change was five point two percent. And as you'll see, that's with some pretty significant coverage changes as a result and part of a property appraisal that was done and provided through the league. So at a baseline, you're already half of what the average business and organization would see. And then we'll dig, we'll dissect on individual lines of, of looking at, what did your rates do? What did, what did the league impose for renewal? And what did the, the premium changes entail? So when you're looking at it, at a line-by-line and a rate perspective, the league actually was flat. In fact, there was portions of your, your premium where, where you saw a rate decrease. And, and those comes in the form of your property and your, and your liability. So you'll, you'll see a rate decrease from the league, but then we'll go to, it's like, why is, why is the premium change or why is it different? And that's based on your limits and exposures. So as we talked about caustic instruction analysis, the league does a really good job of keeping pace as best they can with inflation. And that's because included within your policy is, is a national appraisal firm that goes and assesses values for cities, and they apply inflation factors. It coincided with this year, is every seven years, they have that appraisal firm come on site and physically look at the, your buildings, what's insured, and then they compare it with today's values of what items are replacing for. And, and that's where you can see the limit change from two thirty to two sixty-two. And that represents a fourteen percent change in limits. So when you're looking at all things being equal with rates, with, with no rate change, you would expect a fourteen percent change in your property premium. The actual change, and there was a, there was a, a light item change with how the, the league charges for cyber, and we'll talk about that, but last year, part of your cyber premium was baked into the property line. But when you're looking that equaling out, your premium change for your property was five point five percent. So fourteen percent limit change increase to replace your buildings. If, if an item goes down, five point five percent change. So you can see the effects of a, of a rate decrease when the majority of businesses, the majority of those in the US are not seeing those. It shows the strength and stability of the league's program. And then you'll see in below the premium column that this is one of your highest dividend amounts that the city has received, and your most recent dividend was, was over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Your mobile property, and I'll just run each line item, that is down, reflective of, of rate reductions. And your liability in your auto, again, no rate change there. That is a reflection of your underlying exposure. So your liability premium, you have a rating basis for it, part of that is city expenditures. So your rating basis was higher, which then translates to the respective premium. And the same thing with your auto. It's the, the point in time of premium last year versus this year, that's based on your current auto changes in your schedule, again, this year over last year. Your bond is, is slightly adjusted, that's based on FTEs, and so you see a slight premium change there. Fireworks liability did not change. Your excess liability, your umbrella, that adjusts with your underlying exposures, and that is the one area that the league did have a, a rate increase. And you look why, when everything else was flat or less, it's the nature of our litigious society, and they've experienced more claims that have went into umbrella than they have before. And so that's reflective of cost. And you look at, you might question, is it why thought we're subject to a tort statute? And how do we get into those limits? And it's true. So each, each city, each government entity in Minnesota is subject to five hundred thousand per individual or claimant in one point five total. There is items that fall out of the tort statute. One of those is land use claims. One of those is liquor liability for claims that happen outside of the state of Minnesota or what's becoming more prevalent in, when you think of police cases or discrimination acts that would fall in a federal suit, falls outside of Minnesota statute. So again, more people suing for more reasons translates respectively to insurance. Your liquor liability based on sales was, was down slightly. And cyber, and I'll spend a little bit of time here because this is one of the drastically changing aspects of, of security and risk management, and also how insurance companies are looking at it. So you'll, you'll see a noticeable change in part because some of that premium used to be in the property. Now, the league makes, they made a separate coverage form specifically related to cyber, and, and for good reason, to address the growing risks as related to cyber. So when, high level of what, what do you have for cyber coverage, the city is responsible and maintains a lot of sensitive data. All fifty states, including Minnesota, have breach laws if something were to happen and information were exposed. You're subject per those laws to send out credit notification, potentially provide credit monitoring services. There's a number of items that you have to do in addition to what happens if all your data is destroyed or you have to recreate, or what happens if all your hardware is destroyed, or what happens if somebody gets tricked into paying for something that wasn't legitimate? You won't, you're not seeing it now, but in future renewals and by way of, of a heads-up, for lack of a better term, the league has lagged a little bit as far as what insurance companies require for baseline underwriting protocols. And one of those is multi-factor authentication. So likely at next renewal and moving forward and, and within your businesses, the two way to verify it's that yourself. So you log in, and depending on where you're going, then you pull and get a phone code. That, and I won't get into the details, but endpoint detection is another of the two baseline. It used to be just antivirus, but now the claims have been such and drastically increasing that you're going to see some changes as far as cyber is concerned, and just more means to be cyber aware as an organization because it really just does take a click of a link, and it could be in a world of hurt. Your equipment breakdown is the only policy apart from the league because of your gas turbine, and that we had moved last year to a more competitive option. And also, this is a three-year rate lock, if you will, term, which is why you see no change in premium. So overall, all things considered, again, what the, the factors are doing of higher cost, of very strong renewal from what you're seeing with the league. And that's all I have for you, and open any questions, but I want to thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. Questions?
Just, John? In regards to the, the cyber, followed through some of that is, is there, do you foresee a point when there is action that maybe the city could take to help reduce the rates on the cyber? Or is it just?
It's, it's more of yes and no. So if you don't implement, that there's, so the league is lagged behind. There was a point in line, a line in the sand for the standard market, where if you don't have those things, you don't have, you don't get cyber insurance. And so the league is now starting to, in fact, to attest for some of your cyber limits. You had to read their memo and understand what's, what's required of you. But it, it's the Wild West for cyber, and what the rates and what things will entail in the future really depends on how the claims unfold. Through Q two, the same cyber, the average cyber premium increased to seventy-nine percent. Quarter before that was a hundred and thirty, just because the average breach so far, if somebody was taken down, it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars if you're completely hacked and all the, all the claims that entail with it. As far as what you can do, the, the two bullet points, multi-factor endpoint detection, and that just should become, from my estimation and advising on cyber and tying in with security IT professionals, the two best things you can do to start. If you don't have those, this would be a good place to start. That can be your best case to show to underwriting, hey, we're doing everything we can. Are we getting as much credit as we can, or what can we do from a premium perspective? That's only going to rise based on what we've been seeing if claims don't stop.
Okay. And then just another question on that, on the equipment breakdown, you mentioned the, the turbine. Is there anything else that used to be a boiler that's, I think, is it just the, we're talking the turbine over MMU?
Yeah. Yep. The reason that's why it's a separate policy, otherwise it would all be insured through the league. They, it's for technical, it's their reinsurance treaty, and they, they can't insure the gas turbine. And you can't just get a policy specific for the gas turbine for, for a company to look at. It's all or nothing. So the other, I mean, the only other option really would be to insure everything else and uninsured the turbine if you want to do it through the league.
Yeah, maybe looking kind of at Carla on this one, is, then is that paid for by MMU rather than the city?
So yes, all, actually, all the insurance is either prorated based on certain items, how we determine each level of premium, or the location. So that location will be MMU, so that premium expense would be for MMU.
Okay. And just confirm that, and just for, I guess, rest of council benefits, that, that would get covered in the fact that the turbine is set up to be sold the capacity of that turbine, and that well pays for not only the fuel and everything else it uses, but the, I imagine the insurance is all covered in that, too? Because the city through MMU gets paid for just the capacity of having it there and being able to call it up and use it and start it off in a short period of time. So although that is a cost to the city, that's paid back through the fact that its capacity is sold, and other companies are basically paying that for us, so.
So Carla, the MMU doesn't pay the whole equipment, the whole boiler?
No, there's multiple locations. So they pay only the locations that are related to MMU.
So yeah, they pay maybe ten percent of it.
Actually, well, of the premium, they pay the majority of it.
Oh, they do.
Because that turbine one is the highest.
Is the most, okay.
Yeah. It's the highest thing. Like our compressors at the arena, those things are all, that's all boiler insurance.
And lift stations and--
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Just as far as the cyber changes go, there'll be good guidance that's given and maybe through the league.
Yeah, so they're, they're dedicating, and it, it goes by need, right? And it usually lags behind of, 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 of what's going on, but they're dedicating professionals, and there'll be a specific to loss control, a person that can help you in the right direction.
Okay.
So I, I'm not sure the underlying or IT or internal, but utilizing those folks, asking those questions, you go to any cyber conference, those will be the main bullet points. So, you know, it comes with a cost, but it's one of those things that, we've, we've seen it, and it, it's not fun. When it, when it happens, it happens. So it's more, I'd say, from what can you do as a baseline is prudent to what an organization is with the advice that's being given.
Thank you.
So. Any other questions? If not, you have the, the recommendation for the renewal?
I move approval of the renewal.
I'd second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So thank you, Joel, and also thank you to Bremer for your service to the community and on insurance advising. So thank you.
Thank you all. Have a nice night.
Agenda number sixteen, the fire department requests to purchase two grass rig skid units with this night, Quentin Brunsville, fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And before you, this evening is a request to purchase two skid units for both grass rigs that we currently have. Tried to find out how old these were. I looked on past capital spreadsheets that were out there, and I couldn't really find it. I asked my predecessor how old they were, and he said he didn't purchase them, but he, he believed that Dave Marks, which was his predecessor, actually put the order in for it. So they were at least twenty-five to thirty years old. They're starting to be held together by Ray-- They're starting to be held together by radiator hoses and, and hose clamps. We've got some really good use out of it. It's time to kind of think of the future and replace those. So you'll see before you, there's two units that we did spec out. It's difficult to spec both units because they're very customizable. The unit from Hyman Fire Apparatus is a very custom unit. We can actually, they build it all in-house. We can have it built basically the way we need to, which is the unit that you see on, on the screen today. And the unit from Alex Air Apparatus is kind of, is built by a third-party company. You can see the difference is just in, in sheer size and customization. So this is a very standard unit that's out there and kind of what we see is what we get. With the Hyman unit, we can actually ask for different upgrades, which we did, did factor. You'll notice on, in the packet that there is, the Hyman Fire unit is higher priced by $1,615, but I don't think it's, it's the same value by that. So, and with that, the take will be larger. They'll measure the inside of our, of our box and be able to, to build it to the way we need it to. There'll be two fill stations, one on each side. There'll also be a reel, rewind for the top reel on each side of the apparatus. The top hose reel will be turned so it's facing the back end so you can use it out of each side of the truck if necessary. And then also include a work light kit and then a LED level gauge on it as well. And the difficult thing with that is you see the, the white boxes that are just behind the hose, hoses that kind of go on the side of the boxes there. Well, that's the fill level. And over years, they start to go brown and yellow and can't tell how full they are anymore. So having this LED with sensors inside will help with that, to be able to have that. And I'm here for any questions, if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Quinton. Questions?
Just a point here, and I'm going to speak up and then I'll turn it over to the new chairman of the Equipment Committee. But I ran this part of the meeting until we decided on who the new, the new chair would be. The Equipment Review Committee spent a fair amount of time looking this over and discussing the specs and, and recommend the approval of the, of the requested Hyman rigs. So just as a point of, of note.
Thank you, and thank you to the Equipment Review Committee. Other input?
And we also discussed, because there's a value difference. This is more expensive, but we discussed that the old ones are 30 years old. We're talking between two units, $3,200. And they've had good use of, because you have Hyman in there now, correct?
Correct, yes.
And for us, it's hard to go away from something that's worked for 30 years over, you know, basically it comes $100 a year. So we felt that spending the extra money was well worth it for these two units. Just to clarify that, we're not spending money, we're not spending more over something that we think is less. It's just.
Yeah, 30 years goes by fast.
That's right. You should know, Mayor.
So Quinton, the, these are units that probably have the vast majority of their usage is for grass fires that is outside the city.
Correct, correct.
So the, the, this is really one of the reasons that we have contracts with the townships for the areas that you serve for, for, to respond to grass fires, to respond to fires that need water hauled because there are no fire hydrants, whereas we do in the city. So we have an investment and that investment is really, is really part of that agreement that we have with each of the townships that you serve.
That's correct, yeah. We, we cover, I don't know the new number, I believe it's a little bit less than that, but about 152 square miles is what the Marshall Fire Department actually covers. A huge area outside of the, outside of the city that we do cover. And having two of these, we're, we're about five or eight short of what we really need when it comes to a response, an actual response for a large grass fire. And so having these two, they'll be spent in other agencies and other, in other response areas as well, just to cover, to help for mutual aid. And we have agreements for that too, Mayor.
John? Yeah, and can I go? For one thing, I had an opportunity that you showed me the units and know what we're talking about and the Band-Aid fixes and the radiator hose that you put on to get things to work. But is there a value to the old units?
I think there is. I think there is, Councilman. I don't know what it is. Likely put it on a, on a Purple Wave or some state auction to try to see what it, what it can bring and, and see if somebody can value it that way. If not, maybe a local farmer or something can put it to use for other things as well.
Okay.
I think for public, public safety, I think it's met its good limit for jurisdiction of our size, though.
Okay. So rather than going to, you know, smaller fire department or something?
It may.
Maybe it could be if it's on an auction.
Right. And we've done a good job maintaining it. I mean, to have a, a unit like this last for this long, I hope this one lasts, it'll have been a little bit longer with new technologies and new ways to make things, and that's kind of the goal. So we learned a lot when we had that one. There's been some new piping that's kind of been replaced on the old one based on mistakes that were made. And, you know, we just learn from mistakes and move on.
Any other questions? If not, what's the wishes of the council on this request?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Quinton. We'll move then to Agenda IM number 17, Consider the Resolution Calling for the Increase and the Improvement of the Pollinator Habitat with, with us tonight, Amanda Beckler from Community Services and, and also has been our point person on the Green Step Cities. Amanda, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, as a resolution, I prepared calling for the increase and improvement of pollinator habitats. As indicated in the background information, in June, the City of Marshall achieved step four and step five in the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program. This is a program which is based off of 29 best practices with the focus on cost savings and environmental sustainability. As the Green Step Coordinator for the city, my goal is to maintain the step five designation within the Green Step Cities Program. Step five is the highest level that you can achieve, so we've already met that. However, it is important to continue looking at the future goals of the city in order to maintain that status. As part of this process, pollinator habitat has been identified as the next goal within the Marshall Green Step Cities Program. Pollinators include butterflies, bees, various birds and insects that play a critical role in flowering plant reproduction. As stated in the resolution, there has been a significant loss in pollinators, which has had a tremendous impact on the variety of species. One example that I'm sure most of you have maybe heard about recently is the monarch butterfly. Monarchs have seen a significant decrease in population of up to 80% over the last 30 years and has recently been added to the red list of threatened species as endangered by the International Union for Conservation of Nature. What I am asking of you tonight is the approval of the resolution in your packet, which asks for the city to establish a goal of protecting and enhancing pollinator species in their habitat throughout the City of Marshall. As you can see in this resolution, there are several areas in which I've identified as the focus, which includes but is not limited to identifying and developing areas in which pollinator habitat could be established or reestablished, providing educational opportunities, and developing partnerships to enhance pollinator habitat. As you can see in the map that's provided in your packet, these are areas, there's areas that are highlighted by the city that are currently being mowed. City staff currently mows a large amount of green spaces throughout the city, and this resolution asks that we set a goal of at least 5% of those currently mowed green spaces to be redeveloped into pollinator habitat. This will reduce cost savings for maintaining those areas throughout our warm season months, as well as provide a nectar corridor for our at-risk species. With that, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Questions?
Can you, as just an enhancement to this, can you take credit for private developments? Or do you have a way to document that for people that have created the, the pollinator beds?
So in Green Step, we can take credit for, it doesn't have to be city-run programs or, or city actions only. We can certainly take credit within the Green Step City programs of any other entity.
Because I know there's a number of private residences in the community that, I think, two, two years ago or maybe three years ago, even like Greenwood Nursery did a push on pollinator plants. And I think there's actually been quite a bit that's been done with that. So it's kind of nice to see that.
And maybe speak a little bit to, to the education that goes along with that then? Because that would, that would directly connect with the public.
Yep. Yes, so the education that can go along with it is not only in educating our, our community members of the different species, but also the importance of environmental sustainability as well as the benefits for our community. Being able to provide pollinator habitat not only increases the environment within our community, but also our walkability, our bikeability, getting people out, getting people active, those healthy lifestyles. All of those are Green Step City's best practices, and programs like this fall nicely in line with those.
John? I think kind of along the line, Craig, there is, at least there was, Lawns to Legumes Program that was funded for individuals, and you could apply for an individual grant. I know there was at least one of those in Marshall that was awarded. I'm thinking they're still out there again because they have not filled that up yet. So it hasn't been as, I should say, as strong as responses they would like. So I think there is some room for some individuals getting some dollars directly as well, so.
Yes, and I have been in conversation with Board of Water and Soil Resources and know that funding does come available annually for that, not only in a residential, but also larger city can look towards different funding options there, too.
Sure.
I know, I think your focus initially is city property, and one of the things we talked about long range is looking at our ordinance. We have to be a little bit careful because we have requirements for mowing and things like that. So I don't know, Jason or Amanda, if you just want to comment that, you know, we still have some requirements that may be in opposition to this, so.
Yeah, people on our team have been working with Amanda already to review the ordinance, try to propose some different language that can be a little more flexible, that would work in coordination with this effort. So we'll keep working on that and we'll eventually come forward with some language, I imagine, soon.
Very good. Any other questions?
Just talking about pollinators. I know one of the, Jason, I know I brought this up to you, you shook your head the one day, but I know one of the things, the push has been the no-mow May to give the pollinators a chance to get going in the spring. Because a lot of your death of pollinators is right away, people clean their lawns immediately in the spring when they have not come out of hibernation yet. I'm sure you've heard that. But no-mow May has become a, a big push to a lot of cities throughout Minnesota. And it's, you just, you know, you'd have to suspend the ordinance for grass until the end of May.
I feel like we had a no-mow May because we got a lot of phone calls in May about mowing.
That isn't issues, the pollinators are not out of the ground yet and people are already, or education that, don't thatch your lawn, you know, right away in the spring because pollinators are very important. Amanda, you're shaking your head, you've heard of no-mow May.
Absolutely. Several of my neighbors participated, I'd say.
You know, I think in the cities, I've seen it done though.
Some of them didn't even know they were.
There's ways where you register at the city, you put a sign up, and you know which ones are doing it. But it's for pollinators and insects in the spring, that's very important. So.
You can also incorporate a number of the species plants into your landscaping, too, so that you're still mowing your lawn, but, but generating the beds for the pollinators.
There's different ways to do it because years ago, we had a pollinator garden next to my house on Box 10th Street. And we had.
Trees.
Trees of bees. So I remember my kids used to catch the bees, the fun story. They put them in the mailbox, they would sting the mail lady. Seriously, they were little.
That's odd.
Did that.
Wow.
Did that, Craig? But I still laugh about that story, I report.
Yeah, see, and that's the problem. You encourage bad behavior.
I didn't encourage anything, they just did it.
The lawns and, and gardens or whatever, but trees can be a really good source, too. And that would get you in compliance with current ordinances, too. So different ways to do it.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Amanda, and thank you for your work on this. Thank you for your presentation. I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll move then to Agenda IM number 18. The council did meet in session earlier this evening, and based on that, I would recommend that Thomas Melbrook be appointed to a term on the Adult Community Center. I'd entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.
I abstained only because I wasn't at the meeting.
Yes.
Tom's a nice guy, though.
But if that's true, the motion does pass. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports, actually mine have not met since we last met. Craig?
Nothing new to report, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Mine have not met. EDA meets tomorrow.
Amanda?
Planning Commission met. We had two ordinance changes that we went over, but they're going to L and L, so we'll, we'll see them soon.
John? MMU did meet, going through actually some personnel wage studies right now to work on establishing that. I was not able to attend that meeting because I also attended the Welcome Week, which occurred at the same time, was a week ago. And Amanda's left already, but the attendance on that, if you didn't see, was fantastic. They tried something different this year, putting it on a weeknight and estimated about 400 to 500 people that came. And a lot of involvement, a lot of activity, and I think people had a lot of fun on it. So, you know, city administrators out there handing out food and water and everything else, and a lot of fun games going on, and really a good night. And as Steve said, EDA meets tomorrow, did not have a quorum last week, so.
Thank you, John. Jim? We'll move then to Councilmember Individual IM, Jim.
Since you're still here, Jim, I was, didn't have anything, I was sitting here, yes, I was paying attention to the meeting, but I was looking at all the trucks that were going by. And is there a way we can maybe slow some of those semis down? Because someone buzzed right by that window and they were going pretty fast. I know, Craig, when we were having our Equipment Review Meeting, we saw one that just flew down Main Street. And I know the complaint of the businesses downtown is the traffic. So I'm just asking, as law enforcement, if they could maybe take a look at that and, and just pay attention. And yes, I was paying to the meeting, but they make a lot of noise and some of them were really moving tonight.
Okay. John?
I just, last meeting brought up political signs, and I know that was, got a little bit of active for the police department and probably caught a little bit of heat for moving some, but a reminder that is a state statute. And I think we had an earlier discussion today that really needs to apply as well to realtor signs and probably ask either city administrator's discretion on who does it, but maybe contacting realtors and remind them that signs should be put back 12 feet away from the curb, just as well as political signs. I know, you know, really the same for rummage sale signs, but typically those don't stay up as long and are not quite as much of a nuisance, but they still do exist out there. And people should consider that, that they're not blocking a view. So maybe just make that request that somebody notifies the realtors and asks them to move their signs back, because a number of those are right up to the curb.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of to follow along with the discussion we had about yard weeds and snow on sidewalks. In sidewalk accessibility, I think we've always prided ourselves in the community about being pedestrian friendly. And we're late in the year, you know, it's been kind of an odd season for lawn care and growth. And I think everybody kind of, the things that they wished would grow and go green have been really slow, and the things that they wish wouldn't grow so fast seem to take off like crazy, like the weeds and the hedges. And a number of our residents have had hedges planted right up against the house side of the sidewalk. And those have been, you know, growing better, I think, than anything probably this year for whatever reason. And there's a number of sidewalks now that you can't really even walk on the sidewalk because of the, the size or the volume of the hedge or the bushes. And I think, you know, just a word out to people to trim those up and remember that if you, if you can't use the sidewalk because of your hedge, that hedge probably needs to be dealt with and, and the bushes. So just kind of a word out there to the, to the residents to take a peek at your property and, and get those trimmed back so that people can actually enjoy the, the sidewalk and not have to walk on the boulevard or out in the street. And that's really all I have.
Okay.
Steve?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda?
I don't either.
Then we'll move then to Staff Reports, starting with City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Yes, we at the city did another information sharing on signs late last week and had some offline conversations, too. And we've retreated a little bit from 12 feet because, in all honesty, it varies in every part of the city. And when asked to give a number, it's really hard. And the answer, the best answer is what the mayor said early on in our discussions about this, which is know your property line. And so we shared that in a posting, and one other advice that we got is, you know, we're, I think we're fairly close to November and the general election date, is that we can do some comparisons with other cities post-November and do a little more thoughtful consideration on what should be communication and what does that look like. And we'll do that. A lot of cities say 10 feet, to be honest, and that still may not work for some properties, but you've got to be within your property lines. I will agree with what was stated by staff. There's a lot better compliance. I mean, if you drive around the community, there is a lot of signs that are on their own property. So even though it wasn't favored by some, there's just a lot better compliance. And so I think some of the efforts were good. And to go way back, there are a lot of concerns expressed about the location of the signs. So that's what staff were reacting to, phone calls, emails, you know, we got, we got a lot of them. So I didn't say complaints, said concerns. So, anyway, we'll keep working on it and I can certainly talk to realtors, too. That wouldn't be a problem at all. Yesterday, we had our indoor rec study consultants onsite. They did some tours, they met with SMSU and they met with the High Marshal Area School District, and we had some stakeholder meetings. And the city council did the right decision by going forward on the study. Really good, thoughtful conversations, some real good, good back and forth on this and, you know, facilities cost a lot of money and we want to make sure, if we get down that path, that we're being conscientious. And I think that this study will help us with that. They did tour YMCA, too. So lots more discussion on that. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. If you've driven by the city's property on North US 59, the former Mosh property, you may see some digging going on on our property. That's not the city spending any dollars without your approval, that's Verizon putting up a cell tower. The city had granted them a conditional use permit a couple of years ago, and there was already a prior agreement for that to be completed there and installed there. So just a notice to council that that's what's going on there. I can't remember if we had actually told you that, that we had issued a building permit within the last month, so... Okay. On Lyon Street, we're patching today, which is good. We'll do some painting hopefully tomorrow out by Block 100. So hopefully we can get that opened up within the next week to traffic. That'll be great. South First, Greeley Williams Project, a lot of concrete work going on now, curb and gutters in place, a lot of pouring, getting ready for blacktop. Holber Road, finishing concrete this week as well, so hopefully be opening that soon. So lots of paving, projects coming to a close and things are looking good. That's all I've got.
Okay. And Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Starting with the three that always get discussed, Helena, the building is down, we're getting closer. Councilmember Lozinski, sometime during your tenure on council, this will be resolved.
It's not only down, Dennis, I have all the grading down. It actually looks nice out there. I drove by there today and it looks nice.
Number two, annexation. The addition of 80.52 acres is now in the City of Marshall. That was approved by the state agency on September 22nd. The annexation is effective as of that date. The annexation order has been issued and it will be recorded soon. And Broadmoor Valley, I had some discussions with the Attorney General's Office yesterday. We're setting up a meeting to discuss mediation. I think they're trying to get one large global settlement to address quite a few things. So I'm discussing this matter with the Attorney General's Office next Monday to set up some timelines to accomplish that. And then also, the city has received a proposed purchase agreement regarding the relocation of the Aquatic Center for the future, so reviewing that purchase agreement. And again, it is subject to and contingent upon approval at some future legislative session of funding on that. So nothing immediately is happening. It's all dependent upon legislative action. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move forward then with the remainder of the agenda, which includes the minutes from the Library Board, the Public Housing Commission, our financial report and our listing of building permits, as well as our listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Amanda, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes, we are adjourned.